Mayor Andrew Madellin.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cici Foley Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Jose Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Donald Hawley.
Present.
Councilmember Derek Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Oliver.
Here.
And Councilmember Charles Rigby.
Here.
Thank you so much, Sonia, for that. And I will ask everybody at this time to join my good friend Pastor Joyce Lane from Gloria of Zion Ministries. She will give us the invocation.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Lord, we thank you. And just looking what we stand for, the city of Madera, and I am reminded what's listed on the wall in God we trust. And that is so true, Father. We thank you because we're always able to depend upon you for our help. There are many times that tasks and assignments have been given, and we sometimes see them and feel that there's such an impossibility overwhelming. But we will speak as Psalms 121 stated, "We will lift up our eyes to the heels." Where does my help come from? Our help comes from the Lord, the Maker of heaven and earth. You will not let our feet slip. You who watches over us will not slumber. Indeed, you who watches over Israel will neither slumber nor sleep. This song expresses assurance and hope in our God's protection, day and night. He not only made the hills, the heavens, and the earth as well. We should never trust a lesser power than God Himself. But not only is He all-powerful, He also watches over us. Nothing diverts or deters Him. We are safe. We never outgrow our need for God's untiring love, untiring watch over us as a people in the city of Madera, California. God bless and all of the people did say yes and amen to the will of God.
Thank you, Pastor Joyce. Great way to start the meeting. Will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great butt life for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public comment. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves and state the subject of their comment. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak under this definition of public comment?
I watched him too.
Looks like we have a couple of past, a couple of past mayors.
Security.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, keep your hand on your wallet.
Past.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, I'm Gary Savanda. I reside at 3544 Seaside Drive here in the city of Madera. And I'm not here this evening as the Madera County Assessor. I am here as a member of a group put together called the Intergovernmental Relations Committee that was formed by our board and the management of the county at our annual planning event. With me tonight is Supervisor Rob Poitras from District Three. And we are here to personally deliver an invitation to your council and any staff members that you deem necessary to attend a workshop, which would include the city of Chowchilla, the city of Madera, and of course, representatives from the county of Madera, in an exercise to identify areas where we can speak with united voice to Sacramento, to Washington, DC, and to the shared constituents that we all serve. The proposed date is Saturday, September 30th, and it would be held at the Madera Municipal Golf Course. It would include breakfast, a workshop that will be headed by a gentleman by the name of Bill Kayatt. He's a formal facilitator from CSAC, and he did the job at our workshop. We'll finish with lunch, and then, those who wish to participate, we would have a simple nine-hole golf outing, where we could potentially mix and match the representatives from all three jurisdictions. The cost for the meals and the facilitator will be covered by donations, and not taxpayer dollars, and not our credit cards. The county will take care of securing these funds, and individuals who wish to play in the golf outing will pay their own $20, which will cover the cost of nine holes of golf and the cart rental. So two meals, some friendly competition, and a chance to find areas of agreement rather than disagreement. We think this is an invitation that we truly hope you will accept. So with that, I'd like to introduce the honorable Robert Poitras, who is, as he said, former mayor and councilman, city of Madera, and currently Supervisor District Three.
Wow. Man, what an introduction. Thank you, Gary. It's, uh, what are you gonna be doing in three years? I have a campa-- no, anyway. Well, thank you very much, you know, for allowing Gary and I to exceed the three minutes in public comment. Thanks for not ringing the bell yet. And it's a pleasure being here. Love being with you guys. Feels like family, and, uh, and thank you so much for the warm welcome tonight. And again, we're looking forward to this event on September 30th. I think it's gonna work out really well. It's, uh, now, I'm not so sure how nine holes of golf with mix and match are going to create friendship. Sometimes enmity is created in those types of situations, but, no, I'm sure it's gonna work out great. But, you know, I think we've got a new day in, in the county organization. We've got, uh, there's actually two members of the Board of Supervisors that are former city council members, and we have our assessor, a former mayor, former city council member. And I think it just, it's allowing us to have an opportunity to really, truly break down barriers. And, uh, and I think what it comes to is, uh, the will and desire to do that, and I know it can be accomplished, and I know with this organization, I know it well, and it's a class organization, and I know that the city's gonna be stepping up, and, and we're gonna be doing our best in regards to the county. And Chowchilla's been invited, and I believe they've accepted the invitation. And I've given invitations to Mr. Thuley, our mayor, and Sonia, and so, anyway, looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you both so much. I really appreciate you being here, and both as former mayors and serving a number of years right here on this dais, understanding the value of working together. Remembering both of your campaigns, you both had said through cooperation and collaboration, and this is doing just that. What we can do as a community and as a whole together, we can really move that needle. So I really appreciate you being here, the invitation that you have extended to us. I think it would be a wonderful day, and I do not want to speak on behalf of my colleagues, but we would love to accept your invitation to work together with the two cities in the county of Madera to be that one solid voice and, uh, and put Madera on the map. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have a presentation. Annette Quoc from Mid Valley, that would be you. Thank you so much and your group for joining us.
You're welcome.
Oh. Before you do that.
Yes, sir.
Before you do that, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone else in the audience wishing to speak under public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Thank you, my friend. And now, we will continue with the presentation.
You're welcome. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Annette Quoc, and I'm with Mid Valley Disposal, and I'm happy to introduce to you my wonderful boss, Joseph Kalpikoff.
Thank you, Annette. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, administration, staff. Joseph Kalpikoff, President of Mid Valley Disposal. As you know, we are your franchise solid waste recycling provider. With that being said, we do have an open house this Friday to unveil our new processing line in Fresno. But tonight, we're here. I have my staff, Yvette and Casey, with Annette. We've, we've worked with Mary Ann and her department, and they do a fantastic job each year putting on the Fourth of July Golf Tournament and the Firework Show. And as a family company, we know what community means and what it means to a city to bring your family out to an event like that. And a great event like that to celebrate independence and our freedom is, is something that rings true with our, with our family. So with that said, we would like to present the city with a donation of $10,000 for their, their firework show this year, and, uh, hopefully it gets bigger, and it gets longer, and it gets higher for, for the, for the residents of the city.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the only suggestion I have for Mary Ann is a golf tournament if there is a prize, a nice prize for last place at the golf tournament. I would, my team would surely appreciate that.
I think we're gonna discuss a $10,000 last place check. Is that, is that what it is? Is that what you do, Joe? Just recycle it back into the, no pun intended? Thank you very much for that. We really appreciate your support. Thank you so much. I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they would not mind. Item D1 is a presentation by the Madera Coalition for Community Justice, and they have requested that we move them up in the agenda due to a, an illness. And so, if my colleagues don't mind, I would like to call, uh, call them up now so we can do that presentation and let them be on their way. I understand that Mr. Hawley is not gonna be here. Lourdes, will you be doing the presentation, or Mr. Nunez, or both? If you would please come up to the podium, please.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, and city councilmember, staff, and public. My name is Lourdes Herrera. I'm the Director of the Madera Coalition for Community Justice, and it's my coworker.
My name is Rafael Nunez. I'm the Youth Coordinator for Madera Coalition for the Madera Youth Leader Program.
And we are here to do a few presentations. We no make too longer for the program we did this last fiscal year.
Okay. So, okay, so this is my first time up here, so please be gentle.
No worries.
Okay. So I'm the, like Lourdes said, I'm the Youth Coordinator for Madera Youth Leaders. This is the, our 2016 to 2017 fiscal year. So as of right now, our program consists of thirty-five individuals. These are actually twenty-two of our consistent active members that are involved in majority of our programs, actually in all of our programs that we have. And then, to start off is, what we do is, in the initial start of the program, we start covering bases as like the A through G requirements that we have with our students. We sit down with them, we make individual empowerment power plans, which is where we sit down with each, each single, each one of our youth and kind of plan out to see what is it their goals are for the future. Some can be, we work with ages from thirteen all the way to nineteen, for the most part. A lot of them are in high school already, so they're working through getting the requirements to meet them for, for, to go to uni, to the university. We basically target a variety of kids that work on different programs, but we want them to kind of spark the interest and to pursue higher education. For the most part, we cover majority of the A through G requirements. And then with, from moving on from that, is we actually got the opportunity to visit Stanford University, just to kind of follow up and see, give the kids the opportunity to kind of see what these prestigious schools are, and not just watch them through movies or anything through TV. It's actually get to be there physically, touch the, see the culture, see, see what it's all about. And thankfully, when we went out there, we had Dr. Silva from the University of Stanford and David from Madera unified, expressed the importance of education to both youth and parents. And the good thing about that was that Dr. Silva actually tar, he explained to the youth that just because our parents do not have enough financial, the financial stance to cover us to go to these schools, it doesn't mean that they don't have the opportunity to work hard and get scholarships to attend these schools. So it's, it's still possible for them. And then from that point on, we actually had the opportunity to have one of this, one of their current Stanford students actually give us some small advice to the youth that, that went out there, kind of on what was his experience, what he would have changed, what, what he would advise them to do. And the youth actually took this very, took it to heart. They actually enjoyed the conversation. Then we also have done local visits to Fresno State. They were actually, they were actually able to participate in the Chicano Youth Conference where it was just kind of more of a, a certain population that was targeted, just because we want to encourage that. It's just not just certain races that get to go to college. It's, we want to expand it to know that the opportunity is open for everyone. We've also actually took some of our parents and our youth out there to Fresno State so they could actually have a campus tour. For the most part, they enjoyed what it was to be, what it was to walk around as usual students. They actually got to enjoy it, and for the most part, we had most parents that were interested. Most of their kids will be attending this school in the, in the, in the fall.
Good afternoon. Sorry I'm late. I just came from a conference meeting or training out in Ridley. My name's Evelyn. I'm the Youth Coordinator for the Madera Coalition, and this is our program that I'm actually doing the training for. Gare Corazon is actually to involve both parents and youth together to know their roots and backgrounds and their generations from back then, to not lose the tradition, to keep that connection going, so they can pass it on through, through generations down on their families and their, their futures. So these are, these are a couple pictures from the classes that we have taken trainings. Obviously, that's me up in the front training them, a little bit of whatever the program was, giving them a couple tips, and how, I give them the perspective of the youth, so they don't only see the parental side of it. We also attended the first annual conference, the youth conference that was held at Desmond here the other day. Our youth, the ones that we, me and Rafael work with, actually recruited other youth. So those are the ones that we're gonna be working with this following semester coming up.
And usually during our weekly meetings, we have icebreakers for the youth to kind of get involved with one another, kind of break, break down that, that barrier they have. We all understand that youth nowadays are stuck on their phones. That's the truth. That person, the person communication is dying out, unfortunately. So what we're trying to do is get them to kind of, you know, get to talk to one another more face-to-face, other than just on their phones. These, these icebreakers basically build communication, leadership, and teamwork, as well as other aspects. We've also actually had the opportunity to take them to the Color Me Rad Run, was it in April, in April? And they actually got to experience what it was to be part of something bigger, other than just exercising. We actually, they actually made it fun. Kids have the opportunity to do similar activities like this, but with the way things are right now, kids tend not to really want to do it, but this was more of an incentive, kind of go out there, and, and it was for a purpose. It was to, fundraiser for the Ronald McDonald House as well. And the kids got to understand that what they were doing was making a difference in people's lives.
The O C, O Y C training, we did it with another, with another organization. They brought a whole lot of youth from the Central Valley together out at the San Luis Reservoir. And what they did was just team building skills, leadership, and they got to see what other youth are doing in their communities out, out of their own. So they got to see a lot of different point of views and all of the different backgrounds. And they, we brought them all together for a three-day weekend, so they all worked together. We all put them in teams. There's like three different teams, and they all, we all put them together with different people, so they learned to work with others and not just within themselves in their own community.
And I'm pretty sure everyone's seen, been around and seen this actual mural piece that finally went up. This actual mural piece was put up by an artist, as well as with the help of majority of our, of our youth. Every individual in this picture, and there were more that came to help, were able to understand what was the purpose behind this painting. It wasn't just arts and crafts moment. It was learning history, as well as kind of modernizing it, using the justice that exists with, in comic books, and kind of relating to more individuals that made a purpose in our, in, in the world. And this is the, the second side, just implying justice and just our really, really good artist, Eric, who was giving lessons on just, it was urban art.
So, and other projects that we have been involved with are the, like the Kern Farm. It's a local organic farm that's out in Kern County. So the youth, we got foster youth and high school youth working together to harvest these potatoes and onions. Obviously, they went on two different dates because there was a lot of them, and there's a little bit of us. So they did go out and enjoy, it was hot, so they did enjoy picking them. They didn't see the whole process of planting and all that, but they did enjoy helping them. What took a whole day process, took them like four hours to do, with all of them doing it together as a, as a group. They also got to meet some farms. We actually killed our rattlesnake because it was out in the chicken place thing. Obviously, I've been involved with them for a pretty long time now, so I was part of, I was a youth, now I'm staff. So I got a holding duck for the first time. Some kids didn't even know what holding a chicken was, right? So we brought them back to this farm. Obviously, there was more like exotic animals out there, but these were the ones that we were able to hold, that were able to let us hold them. So these are a couple of our youth. So breaking the ice, we went out to Visalia to a, to a food justice conference. And all this was, was just meeting, obviously, again, youth from the Central Valley. We brought them from different diversities, and they were all sharing stories about how difficult it is to reach organic foods. So we all came together, shared our stories. We cooked together to see how easy it is to grab anything and just cook it, sharing. So that basically was what this, this training was. Obviously, we took them out, and they did enjoy this trip, too. The education session, again, it was just showing their experience on how they, how poor they were to get food, how expensive organic food is, and how, how they don't have the access to stores. They have more access to liquor stores than they do to actual food markets. This was our group picture. We obviously became trained by a food bank out of Visalia, and this was our group at the end of the day. We actually became really close. We haven't had any contact with them again, just because of our time and our staffing, but we, we do want to continue this, to take them out, to meet more people, to know what, that there's more problems out there other than their own.
And we would just want to take the time to thank, thank you for your funding, because due to the funding, we were able to enrich our youth's lives and empower them to be great, great leaders within their community. They actually got to experience, as you can tell in the pictures, the kids are actually enjoying these, and they're becoming role models themselves, and that's what we want our youth to continue to be doing.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Councilman Hawley.
Yes. You made a statement that you're reaching out to all nationalities. What are you doing to get other nationalities involved?
So at the moment, we're currently reaching out to junior highs, high schools. We're trying to get more, and as we're expanding our programs, we're trying to target other populations as well, and other industries.
But I know, what are you doing to involve other nationalities, like African-American, Caucasians, Japanese?
Everybody is welcome to come in. We have a brochure, and we give out during our outreach. We are doing in schools, we are doing in events. Everybody's welcome to this group. If we got these teenagers is maybe the most there are not, have a good GPA, we try to get more youth. They have maybe some problems, or they are going to 1.7 GPA, and try to talk with the parents to like motivate them, like they, they can come in and continue their education. And we see the results. They are going up, and they are going to, like, we see, we went to Stanford, they have a dream now, like, maybe I can go on that, that place.
So what I do, I actually meet the parent while they come to our outreach table. I meet the parent, I talk to the youth, I do one-on-one contact with them, and then I engage them to come in. There's like a little hook to get them to come in, so that's what I do. I go in one-on-one, introduce myself, here's my number, here's my card, contact me. I'm not, I tell them that I'm not forcing them to be there, because some of them don't even want to show up, just because they're friends, don't come. Bring your friend, you're more than welcome to come, and that's what I do during our outreach events.
Yeah, but that's still answered my question. My question was, what do you do to reach other nationalities? Do you go personally to, to the schools and see them and give them flyers and tell them they're all welcome, or?
Yes, at the school, like Rafael mentioned, we're, we're going to middle schools and high school. We are open to serve everybody. Like, we approach to maybe to the Indian, African-American club, and then other groups. And they have meetings at the different high school. They meet with different ethnics and cultures and races.
Thank you. Councilman Oliver.
First, I just wanted to, to say thank you for returning to City Hall and providing us this update. It means a great deal, and I'd like to thank you for your continued good work. And, you know, obviously, we're all aware of the Coalition for Community Justice, as well as Madera Youth Leaders, and prideful of, of your ongoing efforts. And it definitely helps me to, and it makes me proud to see, you know, through the images and the report that you provided tonight, a lot of the good work that you all are doing. And Rafael, you did a really great job for this being your first time. And I had a quick question for Evelyn. You mentioned that you were a previous Madera Youth Leader, and now you've pivoted into the role as a staff member. Could you maybe share a little bit as to how this group shaped your experience as a youth, and how that's guided you through your career and professional development?
Okay, I'll be really brief, because it's a really long story. So I started when I was 12. Lourdes, actually, I started at the food share. And I started going, and I was like, Mom, why are you dragging me there? You know what, I don't want to be there. And then she started involving me with the youth group. We obviously had different youth. But then I just kind of like drifted off. High school came, I started doing my own thing, and then I was like, crap, I'm not graduating high school, like what am I gonna do, you know? So I graduated late high school, so I had that experience of graduating late. Then I figured like, what am I gonna do with my life? I'm not going to college, I'm not doing anything. So Lourdes, my mom started working with the coalition, and then she's all like, oh, there's a job opportunity, maybe you can go in. I don't have the experience, I don't have anything, Mom. She's like, yeah, you can use the coalition when you started doing the food share. And I was like, oh, man, I can't do this. So I was forced, forced to go to the youth group again. So I started going, and then we had another coordinator, and I was just like, man, this is not for me. So I left again. I didn't go back. So then I, I was like, okay, maybe I need to do something with myself. I need to finish school, I need to get financial aid. So I started doing financial aid, I started asking for help from the other staff members. Thanks to that staff member, I stayed, and I got a, not an internship, but I got the opportunity to volunteer in the office. So when I started volunteering in the office, I got the opportunity to apply for AmeriCorps. So I applied for AmeriCorps, I applied, I worked off-site, so I was at first five, and at the coalition. And then after that, I just, they just seen potential in me, did not give up, and I just still finishing college and going to.
Good for you.
Thank you, Lourdes.
Great, good for you.
To the coalition, yeah.
Well, good for you, and thank you for sharing your story. And again, I appreciate you all for being here this evening, and I think I would love to maybe see a presentation in the future from some of the other youth leaders, and it'd be a great opportunity to meet all of them. And we appreciate their service and their passion for the community, so please share that. Absolutely.
One of our ideas is maybe we can start to recruit the youth from 2001, and maybe we can get pictures, and where they are, because we have a big list from 2001 to now, you know?
That's a great idea.
And we can, maybe for the next presentation, we can bring, you know, Elsa, he was working for the Madera Tribune. And there are many, many students, you know, Becky, Becky, you know, maybe, maybe for the next one, we can start to contact them and bring to the city council to see what they are doing now.
We'd love to have them here. That would be great. And we're not gonna let you off the hook just yet. Councilman Rodriguez has a question.
You know, Lourdes, I think you answered my question. This was gonna ask in regards to, you said you had thirty-five students on this This was going to ask in regards to, you said you had 35 students on this program now?
No.
And monitoring the students, especially if they go through the program, how long is the course of this program? Is this like a one-year type of deal? Is this from when they start up until they graduate and post-high school? So you brought up a good point is going back to 2001. Maybe sharing some data and possibly keeping some data so that we can see how this program effectively, how, you know, effectively helps these students and reaching their potential. And just like Evelyn's story, they're, you know, really having a positive outcome. So that'd be something that I'd be interested in the future is to see how these kids come from here and do they graduate and what their GPA is after they graduate? Starting at a 1.7, are they up to a 3.0? Do they attend Stanford? But I think your answer is partial, but I'd like to see more data if possible and how you monitor these students and how they achieve their goals.
Yeah, we are happy to bring to you everything. We have files from 2001 to now and a lot of pictures. And one of the things I can, I can see, I'm here at the Coalition from 96. I started volunteering. And when they start the youth group, it's amazing not to see the change. The change from a little kid to a young adult. Like I see many, many parents approach to us like, oh, help me with my kid. It's this and that. And now it's like, oh, he finished or she finished college. Thank you. It's something like a little bit, we can work with the community.
Are you getting any assistance or any help from the Madera Unified School?
We're working with Madera Unified.
Mr. Hernandez was also part of that.
Yes, yeah. And that one was a field trip for parents and the youth. And Mr. Hernandez is a friend from Mr., what is his last name? Mr. Silva. And we say, oh, David, you know somebody from Stanford. And he said, yeah, I have my friend. And we have the opportunity to travel over there. There are 80, 88 people, parents and students. It's a great, great opportunity. Like the parents, they, one of the things, like they asked me, my kids can come in over here? Of course, why not? But we don't have too much money. And Mr. Silva, sorry, mentioned to them, you earn $130,000? And everybody said, no, maybe need 30. You can come in over here, you can send your kids over here. And they explained to the group of parents, they are coming motivated to say to the kids, okay, if you have the feeling like you can go over there, you can do everything.
You know, I think this is a great example of the term when they say it takes a village to raise a child. And in our case, I think the fact that you have multiple agencies such as the Coalition, the City of Madera, Madera Unified and other agencies, really, that's how much it takes to really try to get a child that's probably underserved or troubled youth to try to make it out, you know? And really, I think if we see this and really support it, then there's more opportunity for these kids to go out and make into something positive. So I'm glad and again, thank you for coming out and presenting this to us. I'm really proud to see that these kids have really sought for something bigger and hopefully we get to continue to see these year after year. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Holly said, like we approach all races, yes, yeah, we serve all races. We, last year, we have a sick lady. She stayed with us, working like volunteer during the summertime. And we have Indian people, we have African-American, and we have one Filipino. Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Councilman Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Herrera, thank you so much for returning back to City Hall. I think that a little history, this kind of stemmed from the block grant application that you guys had put in. And I'll tell you what, Ms. Herrera, if this was the type of presentation that you were bringing every year to block grant, it'd be a lot easier for me to make a decision. You guys have a tendency though to sort of pick new projects out of the sky and then how about this project for CDVG? So I think the, if I can just sort of echo some of the sentiments of my colleagues, the idea is consistency. You're telling me from 2001 till now, that's 16 years of legacy that this Coalition has imparted into young people of our city. And they're returning, as Evelyn's evidence of, they're returning to return the favor and if anything, to be an example and to license kids to dream even bigger than perhaps they were when they were that age. One of the things I want to encourage you to do is, as I'm looking at some of the amazing programs that you guys are offering and opportunities that you're offering to teenagers in our city, I want to encourage you to maybe dream within the city. I love that idea with partnering with the food bank and farmers and organic farm. We have an incredible ag community right here in the city of Madera. And I know several that are involved in that Farm Bureau who would probably chomp at the opportunity to educate and inform young people who are deemed as leaders within their community as well as a food bank who would probably do the same. I know Ryan is very involved in the community. I think opportunities that just popped in my head were, I'm thinking of junior fair board members that I think you guys would definitely excel at. I'm thinking of the opportunities that are offered at our very own Parks and Recreation Department through community groups. I guess what I'm trying to maybe encourage you guys to do is not only expand into other cultures and other races, but I think expand within your own community. I know how the difficulty it is to reach teenagers in this generation. I've been a youth pastor for almost 15 years now. And so I get it. I know exactly where you're at. You're in my space, you're in my zone. I would love to sit with you and if, maybe together, we can sort of dream up or just a time of consultation of what it looks like to get kids plugged in. Because I kind of battle that same thing. I look at your numbers, 22 teenagers, and I think we have nearly almost 10,000 students between high schools and junior high. 22 students, that's a drop in the bucket. And you have the tools to do something awesome. And so I think that you guys are laying down, I know it's hard to say, but after 15 years, you know, you're just now laying down a foundation of what we're capable of doing. But Evelyn is a prime example of it works. You know, it works. The tortoise wins the race, not always the hare. But I'm, I am excited to see where you guys move in the future. I am excited to hear of the amazing feats that you guys accomplish here locally. I am all about, you've got to get out and experience cultures that are outside of Madera. But I think there's something to be said when a young person can walk by and accomplished feat daily and say, man, I was a part of that. Just like these murals we're looking at right now, I painted that. That's there, I was there. And it's not in Visalia and it's not in Palo Alto. It's right here in my home city. And so I want to encourage you guys to do that. And I would hope that 2017, 2018 would be the year of expansion for you guys and that it would be the year to be bold and to take a risk with your group, with your kids and to step into something that is seemingly risky, but at the same time, you know it's going to benefit not only the city of Madera, but the kids that you guys are reaching out to. I'm a firm believer where there's no vision, people perish. And you guys are a prime example of when vision is instilled inside of a young heart, great things can get accomplished. So thank you for returning and giving us a little more insight into what it is that you guys do on a daily basis.
Yeah, and thank you for your comment. And I put in this picture because you asking me the last time, why you changed to art? We continue to do education. But you see, we are not doing only education, we are doing everything. We are doing everything. Like they say, we are jumping over here and doing this and that. We participate in the community garden too. We have many, many things with the youth. And our, when they start to do this, they say, why we don't have our own space to do this? Why we not can have more participation in the city to do these kind of things? Is the idea coming to apply for the funds? We are going to continue to do art, but at the same time, we are continuing to educate them in several things.
Times have changed a little bit over the years as to what kids want to do. And so you're changing with those times and giving them that opportunity. Lourdes, you have done so much for the community of Madera over the last 20 years. And with the Caesar Chavez Day and multiple different events, you have such a great impact on our community. And the international cultural event that you have that represents how many different countries that are from people right here in Madera?
Right here in Madera, 50.
Say that again?
50.
50. 50 different countries are represented. People living here in Madera that will represent a different country outside the United States. And that's just absolutely fantastic. And so reaching out and crossing those borders, if you will, is just fantastic. So thank you so very much for all your efforts that you've done so far. We look forward to continuing that partnership. And Mr. Nunez, I understand you had a car accident today and you probably want to get off your feet. But I will tell you that your presentation was fantastic. And if you and Evelyn are leading our youth today, then they're in great hands. They really truly are. And investing in our youth and investing in our future, you can't lose. So I want to thank you so much for your efforts. And Evelyn, for your story and being a product of the Coalition and what they're doing is just a fantastic story. If I can do it, you can do it too. And so you are now giving back to the community and showing our youth that there is a way. There is a way. Maybe a little pressure for Mom, as you said. And sometimes that's what it takes, a little bit of a push. So thank you also very, very much for being here this evening and for giving us that update. And we look forward to great things to come from the Coalition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting him go first. He's walking a little slow, poor guy. Moving on to item A1, Transit Workshop. Yvette?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm very excited to bring this presentation to you tonight. Thank you very much for your interest in transit. I'm going to try to give you a very general overview of City of Madera's transit operations. First, let me explain what's in this picture. This is our intermodal, which is on East Street, 1, 2, 3 East Street. If you haven't seen it before, this is the place from where our operations are executed. This houses our dispatch, are pretty much our first transit operations. I'd like to review the mission. The City of Madera Transit Department seeks to provide transit customers in the city's transit service area with public transportation to specified destinations in a professional, courteous and timely manner with equipment that is accessible, affordable and comfortable. It's quite an undertaking and I'll explain to you how we go about achieving this. We are in operations 365 days a year. So we feel that we are accomplishing our mission to a great extent. Our in-house staff consists of a grant administrator, that's myself, a program manager, a transit consultant. It's a very, very small contract, but it's become very valuable in the recent months. We solicit a lot of assistance from our finance staff. We currently are managing about 24 grants. We have 24 open grants. So can you imagine the number of financial reports that we have to produce on a quarterly basis? So we solicit the help from a financial service manager and an accountant. Also, public works staff. We solicit help from public works. We have one maintenance worker on a part-time basis that helps us maintain the bus stops. We have 105 bus stops. And a custodian, that is also a part-time position and they maintain our intermodal. We contract with First Transit and I have invited the general manager of First Transit to be here tonight in case you have a lot of operating questions for him later. He has three dispatchers at the intermodal and 23 drivers. And my understanding is that all of them are licensed to drive the MAX buses, but only 11 can drive the Dial-A-Ride buses. And our current fleet is 17 buses. Let me point out, direct you to the age of these buses. Some of them are quite old. And we provide two services. One of them is the Dial-A-Ride service. This is basically door-to-door service. Individuals call dispatch and make an appointment a day in advance. And based on availability, they can schedule a door-to-door ride. We operate Monday to Friday, starting very early and ending at 6:30 PM. We also have Saturday service and Sunday service. A lot of cities don't have Dial-A-Ride service on Sundays. So we are providing an added service here in Madera. We are, general boundaries are in the city, but we also extend service to the county. We charge $1 for a ride in the city and $2 for a ride in the county. We also offer a discount for students. And these are typically our college students that go to Madera Center. The other service is Madera Area Express. That's the MAX service. We have two routes. As you can see, we start off at the Walmart Shopping Center. One of them travels west and into town, the other one east. It's a longer route throughout town. Our cash fare is 75 cents. It's very, very, very low in the region. And in addition, we offer a discount to seniors and disabled passengers during non-peak hours. Children under three are free and we offer a monthly pass for $26.
The cash fare, Yvette, that is for one ride, one stop? That is, I can sit on this thing all day long for 75 cents?
No, one ride with a free transfer.
Free transfer, thank you.
So who are we serving? This is a snapshot of our riders for a month. The Madera Area Express is mainly serving the general public with a good portion of seniors and disabled passengers. Dial-A-Ride, we are serving mainly seniors, disabled and students. And actually, this number is very low. We might have actually used data from a month in which school wasn't in session. So it's not very representative of the number of college students that utilize the service.
What's a better, what's a better number?
In May, this last May, we had over 700.
And then, Yvette, help me understand, we have child separate because that's a separate price point?
Correct.
Okay, then just, rather than throw them in with general?
Yes.
Going to indicate the price point even though they're free?
For Dial-A-Ride, one and under are free.
Okay.
And for MAX, three and under are free. We have very many different fares. We're hoping in the future, we can consolidate some of this because it gets really confusing.
Agreed.
Yvette, can I ask you a question? This is to follow up in regards to Councilmember Rigby. Question, now, students, do we have a shuttle bus that goes back and forth or is this based on a Dial-A-Ride?
The Dial-A-Ride.
Okay. Now, based on those numbers, do you think it might be convenient to have something like that? That goes like every certain hour? I'm not sure.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's great demand for a fixed route for the college. And it's something that I'm going to talk about in a little bit. But there's definitely a demand for a fixed route that goes directly to the college. And something that happens is when, when school is in session, those morning hours from 7 o'clock to about 8 AM, the students saturate Dial-A-Ride service, so it doesn't leave much availability for the general public in town.
You know, obviously, because of the students and... You know, obviously, because of the students and, you know, you can always have a fixed fare for them as well, or they might have something monthly, and this way they have a shuttle going directly from and to school.
This is our transit operation expenses, a glimpse of our 2014, 2015. Right now, we're about at 1.8 million. You didn't see a significant increase between 2015, 2016 to this current fiscal year because we weren't fully staffed during 2015, 2016. Typically, we increase our expenditures by about ten percent, so this will continue to increase approximately by ten percent in the future. And this is the breakout of our operation expenses. First Transit, our operator, consumes about fifty percent of our budget, followed by salaries and interfund expenses, and then vehicle maintenance, which includes maintaining the If we relied solely on our fares, we would raise approximately $116,000 on a given year, which is six percent of our overall budget.
That's actually more than what I thought.
Fortunately, we have a lot of grants that helps us subsidize the service. In our books right now, we have a little bit over six million dollars, and we don't use it each year. In addition, this last fiscal year, we've been awarded approximately one million. And we've applied for some additional smaller grants, as well as a larger 1.7 FTA grant that we're waiting to be awarded, so that'll be an additional two million, hopefully coming up this year. I want to just highlight some of the future developments. We are working on the Bus Shelter Phase Two project. That's already underway, and we're expecting to complete construction of twenty-one new shelters this fall. Also, the new transit facility, we're in the design phase at this point, and this is a picture of what it's looking like at sixty percent of the design. And I just want to also mention that engineering staff works on these projects with grants staff, so we also compensate engineering staff for design and engineering work that they do to move these projects forward. We have the expansion of the college route also underway. We've been working with the staff at the community college, and First Transit has already proposed what a route would look like if we're going to the college. So, there's a couple of pieces that we have to still check off before we launch that service. And this year, we will be ordering up to seven new buses. We're working on the first four, and if we get through that, then we'll continue to work on the remaining three for which we already have funding for.
Councilman Rodriguez has a question, Yvette.
Yvette, before you got to this slide here, I was looking at your grants. Are your grants pretty consistent year after year? And are you always looking for new grants? I mean, I see that you have a pretty healthy reserve there, so, I mean, are you consistently looking for different avenues, different grants?
Yeah, actually, FTA provides an annual apportionment for the city, and the more that we grow, the more we get, and it's based on population, so that's secured. Other grants do change, Measure T, PT, I mean, it depends what the state is sending for transit and transportation. So, some of them expire and new ones come about. So, we're just keeping track what the state is doing, what the feds is doing, and ensuring that we apply and follow those cycles.
Thank you, Yvette.
If I may, I, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
I know we talk about this new transit building. Have we got a site? I keep hearing about it, but I don't know if we have a location for it. Have we picked a site or rebuilding off of the?
Freedom Industrial.
For the, for the new transit facility?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we do have a site.
Where's that going to be located?
Dave Merchant, will you help me out with that one exactly?
Councilman Ruby actually noted correctly that it's at the Freedom Industrial Park, on one of the city-owned, the large city-owned property in Freedom Industrial, which is just west of Madera South.
Okay, thank you.
Can I show you the second? Our challenges, we obviously have to respond to the residents, and one of the challenges is responding to the ongoing complaints. We started tracking our complaints in 2014, 2015, and last year, it seemed like there was an increase in complaints. There's a chart that shows you. They're complaining about customer service. For the most part, that has to do with dispatch. They feel that they are not answering, or that they're being rude, or that they're not offering them the dial-a-ride that they need at a certain time. So, I know that dial-a-ride dispatch receives a large number of phone calls, so it's a challenge to improve that customer service. Road hazards is another one. Sometimes we get phone calls from individuals that are not necessarily in the bus, but are witnessing the driving skills of a driver. What else? And on-time service is an ongoing challenge. Our technology seems to be also outdated in dispatch equipment. We don't have the GPS devices to integrate into our dispatch, which will give them estimated arrival times for the buses when they're out on the routes. We're also in need of mobile platforms. There are mobile apps that will tell you real-time location of buses when they're on route. We don't have that at this moment, and we haven't numbered our bus stops, so when individuals call and say, "I would like to wait in front of Walmart," well, that's an easy one, but some location where we can't identify the bus stop that they're going to be waiting at, it's quite a challenge to coordinate that communication for pickups. And also, we don't have a modern fare collection system. Collecting change in our bus is very challenging.
Yvette, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please go right ahead.
You brought up that interesting point about the mobile apps and all. You said that's available, but obviously, we don't have it integrated in our system. Now, also, you said something about customer service. Could it potentially be that maybe with some mobile apps, you know, nowadays, people tend to schedule a pickup via mobile, right? I mean, so they just, I mean, I'm not trying to utilize Uber, or, I mean, let's say, but it's, I mean, obviously, this is more competitive with those fares that you're getting and practically giving them away, but, I mean, at least this way, people can actually go through their apps, set up a time and schedule, and, but obviously, you're saying that right now, we have outdated technology that doesn't support that, right?
Yeah. So, some of the new grants are actually for technology improvements, so we're very excited about that. Also, responding to our unmet transit needs is another challenge. MCTC just recently completed the annual Unmet Transit Needs Assessment. It's an annual process by which stakeholders have an opportunity to express what are their unmet transit needs. And a definition of unmet transit needs are all essential trips requested by transit-dependent persons for which there is no other convenient means of transportation, and that have to be reasonable to meet. They have to be feasible, have community acceptance. It would have to serve a significant number of the population, be economical, and demonstrate cost-effectiveness. For the City of Madera, four items were considered to be unmet transit needs. One of them is increased access to Madera College, additional fare, I'm sorry, fixed routes, going to Fresno, Oakhurst, Coors School, for instance, Sunday service, and longer hours Monday through Friday. Additionally, increasing and changing routes for regional travel, for example, from Madera to Tachilla to Merced, and having additional buses on existing routes. From the four, the only one that was considered reasonable to meet, it was number one, increasing access to Madera College, which we're already working on. That's all I have. I just wanted to also let you know that we are considering some immediate changes and would like to reconsider what our logo looks like. That's our logo, MAX. It's difficult to read. It doesn't stand out, I think. Also, we want to consolidate some of those fares and potentially increase some of those fares, and maybe reduce dial-a-ride service to the Madera College, since we're going to be offering that fixed route. So, what I'm thinking of doing is working with the Transportation Advisory Committee and seeing what their recommendations are, and then bringing some of those recommendations back to you for consideration. If there's interest, a council member being liaison with the TAB Committee, please let me know so that we can work together on addressing some of these ideas for improvement.
That would be great, Yvette. Thank you. Councilman Hawley?
Yeah, sorry, Jen, I just have one more question. You mentioned something about there are stops, our stops were not numbered to where, we need to know where we at. Is that a hard fix to go out and number each location?
Doesn't seem to be a hard fix. We just haven't allocated funding specifically for doing that, and we need to decide, do we want to post schedules, or is that outdated? Is that something that, you know, people, it's not relevant to modern-day technology? So, we haven't done that in the past, but we want to, we want to find something that's going to work for, and be consistent with our technology, our plans for technology.
Because I notice we're putting up some more stops, and the more we get, still don't tell you where the person can be picked up at. So, how will we know what bus is going to go pick up a certain person? If I was to call in at a certain stop, I wouldn't know where I'm at. I would just have to use the street?
The street or the address. For the most part, people are picked up from their homes, or from a clinic, or from school, so, but it does get confusing sometimes when you're on the wrong corner, and people, so it would be helpful to identify a bus stop and maybe pick up people at specific bus stops.
Thank you.
Councilman Rigby?
Yvette, you said our manager's here?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to introduce you to Doug Thompson. He's our First Transit General Manager.
Good evening.
Hi, Doug.
Hi.
Doug, I'm just curious, why don't you give me a little insight into the day-to-day, your feelings, your thoughts?
On transit in general?
Sure.
You know, let me expand a little bit on the question regarding the bus stop locations and numbering them. You know, speaking with the public on a regular basis on the telephone, a lot of times, they'll have difficulty identifying which bus stop they're actually at, and, you know, like which side of the street they're on at a specific place where we've got bus stops on both sides. So, I kind of said, gee, if we had numbers there, so they could just say, well, tell me which number it is. And so, we could quickly identify where they're at, and which direction the bus is going to be heading, so if we need to move them across the street to go in the opposite direction, that sort of thing. So, but anyway, as far as our bus system here in Madera, we're a small-town bus operation. You know, we don't have a lot of technology. And of course, there's, you know, there are so many transit agencies that are kind of going nuts with technology, anything from Wi-Fi on the buses to the, you know, the GPS locating. And, you know, a lot of that stuff is very good for people that are adept at that, but then there are also a lot of people that, you know, are still going to need to give us a call on the phone and say, "I'm at this bus stop. When's the next bus going to come by?" And then, we have, we have customers that you can tell them every day that the bus is going to be there at 3:15, and they'll call every day to find out, you know, what time is the bus going to be here. So, we have a whole wide range of customers out there. Lots of family people, that's why when you see the passenger counts, you see a lot of children. There's a lot of moms and kids running around out there in town throughout the day, taking care of business. So, yeah, we're a small-town bus company. Our streets are kind of small to where you can't just say, "Let's go out and buy forty-footers" and start driving them, driving them through town. That would be a challenge at this point. And, you know, we do a lot of, our Route Number One goes through a lot of the neighborhoods to, you know, to connect everybody to get into town and get where they, where they need to go. So, you can see, it snakes all through town, and a lot of that is on residential streets. So, that would be another obstacle to having, you know, very large buses. So, at this point, we've got smaller buses. We've got three that are thirty-footers, and the rest of them are all twenty-five-footers, and they function between being a dial-a-ride bus or being a MAX bus, depending on where they're needed on a particular day. So, if you have any specific questions?
I've got a lot. Doug, I'm curious, looking at some of the things that was presented to us by Yvette, what is the number-one issue you feel like is needing to be dealt with in our, in our public transportation program that we offer? You have the ear of the council. What is the number-one issue that you wish we would tackle besides the route to the college?
Yeah, well, you know, I think that, I think the fares need to be broken down to where there's not so many and so many different, you know, it's very, it's very segmented. You've got a dial-a-ride fare, regular dial-a-ride fare, you've got a senior and disabled dial-a-ride fare, and you've got a MAX fare, and you've got a senior and disabled MAX fare that is, you know, off-peak and all day on Saturday, and as far as what we need to probably better serve the community is, part of it is, we need input from the community. You know, I've been going to the Unmet Needs Hearing since my first year here in April of 2010, and I was kind of bombarded at that time. There was, there was a couple of, a couple of community members that I got to know really well after, after that first meeting, and the Lideris Campusinus Group was there. And so, out of that, that first meeting, I went to, I went and set up a meeting with the Campusinus folks, and so, we did a lot of just explaining how the MAX works and how the dial-a-ride works. And that was one of the biggest issues, because, you know, every time we go there, they say, "Okay, well, we want, you know, all the service on Sunday and all day on Saturday and later into the evenings." So, over the years, we've done things like we run one bus on Sunday, and so, we've offered it up. If we get enough reservations, we'll schedule a second bus to run on Sunday, and it's strictly dial-a-ride. And this year specifically, somebody was there, and they were talking about getting to church on Sunday. And so, we need the, we need the community to say, "Hey, I want to go. Come get me," or turn into a complaint that we can deal with. And that's, and that's really where I'm at, because, you know, I'm here to deal with problems every day, and if I'm not hearing from people, then, then it's like, okay, what else do you want us to do? But I really like our new bus stops. I think they're, it, you know, gives us a good look, and it gives us some recognition out there on the street. I think from, from the standpoint of people who aren't really technically aware, having a sign out there with the, you know, the stops, when the bus is actually coming by and where it's going. So, I've done some of that on my own since we started our route change last August. But, you know, that would be good. Or, you know, we've got our signs that have been the same for forever. You know, those could possibly have a tear-off or something that we could, we could put a new, a new face up every time we do a schedule change, something like that. So, there's a lot of things to look into, and, you know, some of the technologies, I think, are, you know, are more for show than they are for reality and, you know, and really getting down to it, but... But from the operational standpoint, it would be great for us to have GPS on all the vehicles. So I can look at a screen and I can tell exactly where that bus is.
Look, yeah, I agree. I think that going from point A to point B is the most important thing that we offer. It would probably better suit us, though, if we were to invest in some of these technologies, crossing our fingers that the grants come in so that we're able to do so. I appreciate your willingness. I agree. I think there needs to be maps of routes available on bus stops. I think that that's something that we need to move forward on and no longer just look into. I think that's a must. That's probably pretty essential. The part about getting more riders, I want to really encourage you, Doug. I think that we have an incredible platform in the city of Madera to reach our public, which is not only through social media, but also at our Neighborhood Watch Groups, National Night Out. I think that we could even maybe target some of the larger, you know, denser populated areas that would more than likely use this on a daily basis. That way, you're strategically hearing from people that are seemingly riding this more often than not. And if not you, Eva, or we just got to be more cognizant as a council that when we are at Neighborhood Watch Groups, that we're kind of helping to promote what we have here. What would make it a lot easier for me to promote, Doug, is the issue concerning customer service. Is this an issue? Do we have poor customer service in our Transportation Department?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, I'm standing here as the man who's been running it since 2010.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, we have conflicts with customers. And I think that's where complaints will come from is, you know, if you have a conflict, you know, I need this and we can't produce that for you. And, you know, and sometimes that can devolve into an issue.
Sure.
And, you know, we deal with that. You know, we've had a history before I was even here of people calling in and saying, it's rude, rude. You know, so we went to the trouble of getting a phone system that we can, we're recording every call that comes in. So if anybody ever calls up and says, hey, you know, they didn't treat me right. So we can pull the recording, which I've done many times, and reviewed it with the staff.
Is there anything we could do to maybe just, sometimes it just has to have the perception that we're friendly? The name of the bus driver, is that available to people when they walk on? You know, is it a protocol that when somebody walks in to the bus, that the bus driver says hello? Or is it their job not to engage in conversation? I know when the dial-a-ride shows up, there's a house across the street, 7:30 every day, they honk their horn. Bon, 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 for the person to come out. I don't know a better way to get them out. I don't know. I don't know if they should, you know, get out, turn off the key, leave people in a hot bus in the middle of summer, go knock on somebody's door. I don't know. I'm not sure. I'm just curious, when I was in Kansas City, there's a restaurant called Gates Barbecue. And as soon as you walk into Gates Barbecue, the first thing you hear is, hi, may I help you, really loud. And it kind of startled me, but it was kind of cool at the same time. I'm just kind of curious, is there something we can do as an agency to send the perception to the customer that you are valued and important? And maybe we can begin to sort of just turn the tide from this concept or this ill thought that, you know, the MAX is bad customer service. Because I agree with you. I think we can offer a great product. If not, we already do. What can we do to change that perception?
Well, I think we do offer that. And I wouldn't say it's 100%, but, you know, and the other thing that we have, we have video onboard the buses. So if somebody calls and complains, I get to pull the video and find out what really happened. And so I can tell you, I do see a lot of that. I do say, good morning, see you later, thanks.
Awesome.
There's conversation. And of course, too much conversation is a distraction to the driver, so.
I understand, yeah.
We discourage that.
Sure.
But, you know, if you've got, how many complaints do we have?
Only 23.
Twenty-three in a year?
Yeah.
You know, that's not really saying that, you know, even if you multiply that times 10, which a lot of people like to do. It's 230 in a year of 365 days. And we're transporting, you know, 700 people a day.
Yeah.
So it's still a pretty small, pretty small.
Absolutely.
Part of it.
Absolutely.
And then there's, you know, I don't want to cast any aspersions, but when you get down to the actual complaint, that's, you know, what the complaint is. A complaint comes in, it doesn't mean that they were really correct, but, you know, whether they're correct or not, they're always the customer, so.
Sure.
Answer for me is to solve the conflict.
Right.
What happened? Why was it a conflict? Why was the customer unhappy?
Absolutely.
So, you know, I use those tools, the phone recordings, the video recordings. Working with the customer once they've actually complained and working with my staff, of course.
Yeah.
That may not always respond in the appropriate manner.
What sort of training is our staff going through as far as customer service? Is that something we offer annually, biannually, every three years?
I would say it's ongoing.
Okay.
Especially when in light of the fact that, you know, you do get comments from people. So I am always working with my staff and I'm listening as well. My door is open. I hear 90% of the phone conversations going on throughout the day. So I can get in the middle of that if I feel like it's not going where it should be and they're not presenting them with, you know, with a good customer service.
Absolutely. And I think, I'll end with this, and I think to address Councilmember Rodriguez's comment. I, for one, think, how do you compete with the Ubers or those that utilize mobile platforms in a place where we're not capable of doing that yet? Feeling that we're moving that direction. And I think it's the personal touch. I think that's what it is. I think it is. Because you said it yourself, somebody's going to call every day to ask, is this stop happening at 3:15? Because their whole day revolves around that stop. That's all this old man or this old lady or this person is thinking about is, they wake up at nine in the morning, thinking about their appointment at 3:30 and what time that bus is going to get there. And so I think it's that personal touch. So Doug, I really just want to thank you for your years of work and continuing to make better the transportation every day at a time. And if you could just please pass my encouragement to our drivers, to our dispatchers. But every day, we get the opportunity to touch somebody else. They represent me. They represent everybody on this dais. And a smile, a hello, a thank you. Take your time, breathe before you respond and react, because I know it's tough dealing with people on a daily basis. And I just, I look forward to when we're going to have to address the issue that, you know, we have too many people riding our public transit systems.
Well, I mean, we do have that to a great extent with the dial-a-ride now. When college is in, you know, we're swamped in the early morning hours with people getting out to the college. So with any luck at all, with the new college route when it gets started, we'll relieve that pressure from the dial-a-ride service. So, and, you know, and before I came to Madera, I was previously the manager for the paratransit in Fresno. And it was nothing but paratransit. And so every time, every time and every rider, you touch them before they ride, during their trip, and then after their trip. So it's very, very customer service intensive.
Awesome. I love it. Thank you, Doug.
There's a lot that goes into that dial-a-ride.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Just want to let the record reflect that Councilman Rigby, Councilman Oliver, as well as myself, we serve on the Madera County Transportation Commission. So we were privy to the Unmet Transit Need Meeting and all the testimony that was taken in for the riders that used the system. Councilman Oliver?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eva and Doug, I appreciate the presentation and really great information. This has been eye-opening for me. And personally, my only experience with dial-a-ride in the past has been with my father. There was a time when he was, his health was failing a little bit and he was immobile and bound to a wheelchair. And you don't realize how difficult it is to find transportation and dial-a-ride. And it's, you know, disabled person capability was really a godsend for my dad and our family. So I'm always appreciative of that. And there was really great customer service at that time. I wanted to ask a couple really quick questions. First, do you guys accept credit card when you get on? I'm one of those. I never have cash on me. And I'd be the sucker that walks up there, ready to go, and don't have anything. Do you have that capability of?
We have that capability in the finance department, correct?
To buy a pass, but not the daily trip?
No, not on a daily trip.
Not on the bus or anything like that?
And I think in line with the comments about our technology capability, utilizing apps, GPS, I think that this should be a priority. I agree with Councilman Rigby. I think we have to have that personal touch. And hopefully, we're instilling that as a priority with those staff persons. But I think that the demand is there. It's something that the constituency that we serve already relies on probably most aspects of their life. So I think that that is, and yeah, Charles has made a really great point, especially with our route to State Center Community College District. And it's increased passengers there. I think that's something we should really prioritize if possible. And especially if we're going to be bringing on a new fleet of buses, see what we could do to put that on the top of the stack. Whether it's applying for new grant funding or looking for alternative sources, I think that that is something that is really needed. And my last question is, and Doug, I might have to have you come up here. I know that one of my first meetings as a councilman, I believe that we had a group of drivers come out to our meeting to complain about issues and concerns with regard to safety and security on the buses itself. And I understood that this was followed up on at a staff level. But I just wanted to ask, what precautions are taken to ensure, you know, the safety of your drivers who are doing an incredible public service in our community?
You know, that was the result of a very unfortunate incident. One of our drivers was assaulted. And, you know, you're in a public transit bus and anybody can get on for the fare, you know, on a fixed route bus. And so it's a difficult challenge, you know. And in the follow-up to that, well, let me get down to the painful aspect of this for me was, is the driver called in and said that I've got this person that I don't feel very good about. So I said, all right, I'll be out there. So I met the driver out en route over at the Walmart and, you know, during a layover. So I approached this customer that she didn't feel very good about. And I spoke with him, found out where he was going. Tried to get a feel for what type of a person that was and whether there was an issue that I felt was a danger. And the driver and I both talked to this person. And it ended up that we continued to transport him and then he attacked her. So I found out something myself is that I can't tell whether somebody's going to go nuts on one of my drivers or not. So we've tightened up on things like if somebody seems like they're intoxicated or if somebody is, you know, is acting in a way that is in any way threatening to the driver, we get them off the bus. Whether it's me going out there and getting him off the bus or whether they ask to voluntarily leave. So that type of thing. So that the actions of the customer are an important feature of whether they get to ride on the bus to their destination or not. And of course, we're not going to dump them off in the middle of nowhere.
Sure.
To a stop. But, you know, one way or another, if the driver feels uncomfortable about that customer, then they're getting off the bus.
Right. Great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protem Diegoz?
I have several questions, too. The first one is, you just brought up about safety with our drivers. Our police department puts on a really good active shooting training. Because right now, in our world, we do have that happening and our drivers are defensive, defenseless with that. So maybe that's something that we would want to put them in some type of training and maybe a self-defense.
That sounds good.
Maybe you get with Chief Frazier and see if we can get one of our officers over there to train some of your drivers.
That would be great.
That was my first question. The second one was, Councilmember, you talked about perception of our dial-a-ride and our MAX buses. And maybe Mr. Tully can spare some of Joseph's time to maybe shoot a video of our program, of our dial-a-ride and MAX, to give it a woo, you know? I mean, he does magic. I mean, I don't know if that's an option that we can look at?
The answer is absolutely yes, Councilmember.
Great. So that would like help our image. I'm sure you've seen some of the stuff on our website that he's put up. It's just beautiful work. The next thing is, I'd like to thank you for working with our transit commissioners that we have all put in place to make decisions and to help advise you for what you need there. And I'd like to just commend you for all that you do for our residents in Madera.
Thank you very much.
I think that was it.
Put a Madera Proud sticker on those buses.
Big on the side. Those are very good points, Mayor Protem. Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, I was concerned about safety and security for the drivers also. You know, my wife, she rode the dial-a-ride many times to the Community College. And plus, my stepfather, he was a bus driver for RTDs for many years, you know. And do they have, the driver, do they have mace on them or pepper spray?
They do not, to my knowledge. You know, and I haven't, I haven't had that conversation. So I'm not sure whether that would be a policy that, you know, permissible as a policy for us or not. But I'll have to look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, Doug, a question for you. You know, I noticed that in 2008, I think you had, was it two or five vehicles? And now you're up to 17?
No, we have a total of 17 buses.
17 buses?
Yeah, that's just the year of the bus.
The age of the buses.
Yes, well, okay, but you started with two buses, so in 2008, right? Is that correct? Am I reading that?
That's the age that.
Yeah, we have two buses now in our fleet that are.
Total fleet of 17, okay.
Nine years old.
And that's in operation now, correct?
Correct.
So as Madera continues to grow, what do you see, you know, in another five, 10 years? I mean, are we going to continue to increase that fleet? And if so, what kind of fleet are we starting to, you know, jump into? Is it more environmental-friendly? Do you see other cities that are similar to our size that are doing something different? You know, especially with the demand for more public transportation? You know, we talked about, obviously, technology, but what do you see here in the future for Madera in itself, the way it continues to grow?
One of my goals that, since I've been here, is low-floor buses for the fixed route specifically. Because it's so much easier for people to get in and out of the bus rather than having to go up steps and then on into the bus. Just be able to, and it's much better for people using mobility devices as well. The low floor allows you to have a ramp that just comes out, sets down, and they can motor or get themselves right into the bus without having to go through the process that we currently do where the driver has to stop the bus, get out, go around, open doors, lower the lift, get them on the lift, get them up and into the bus, close it all that back up again, and then get in and secure the customer. So that's one of our bugaboos to on-time performance is, we get a lot of mobility devices on the fixed route, and that's slowing us down. That's slowing us down. So the low-floor technology is something that I'm interested in. From the standpoint of the overall environmental aspect of it, we've got a lot of CNG buses. And we only have one place to fuel them, which is TESI. And we've had numerous issues over the years with TESI's pumps up, down, you know, slow fill, you know, all kinds of issues going on there. So I'm not really too thrilled with the whole CNG aspect of it. There are a lot of pure electric buses out there, but not in the type of vehicles that we use at this point. You know, there's some forty footers out there that, that. That you can refuel on, not refuel, but recharge in five minutes en route. So there are those out there on the market, but they're very expensive, very, very expensive. And so we've kind of been getting what we can afford based on, you know, the grant money coming in. And, you know, as far as the pollution aspect of it, going with a lot of CNG because that was where the grant money was coming from. They were promoting the idea of the CNG, so that's why we have so many CNG buses.
Now, I think this was on a earlier meeting that we had, I think Monday, Councilwoman Gallegos had mentioned something about CNG over at the school district. Is there some type of partnership at all at this time with the Unified School District or anything that possibly can be arranged for? I mean, you said TESSE is the place that you're at now and...
Well, you know, we have at certain times tried to switch over to the school district, but then their pump has had issues. I don't know if they've even got it back in business yet.
They do. They have both pumps running and they're running well. The city put actually another compressor. We approved a $3,000 to put another compressor in. I talked to the engineer first of the year and he says that we're not even using the pumps enough. They should be running like 24/7. And we're like maybe a quarter of what we should be using them at. And so, yeah, and the gas is much cheaper there at Madera Unified to fuel there too.
Well, and then the goal would be to get us hooked up with fuel cards for that location so that whenever possible, you know, we can use it. Or, you know, one of the issues we had over at TESSE was is all the school buses being there and clogging the lanes up. There were central unified buses. There was like five or six of them coming out every morning up here to TESSE. So the competition at the pumps was definitely an issue. So I'm not sure what we'll find if we get set up to go over to the school district.
They're pretty empty after about 7:00. And they don't come back in until 10:00 to start fueling or even in the afternoon, 1:00 before they go on their routes at 2:00. And then they're cleared out of there until 4:35.
Our buses typically will be doing the end-of-the-day fueling, you know, some work between 5:00 and 7:00. So if it's still available at that hour of the day, I don't know what their security is like over there. Then that would certainly be something that I would look forward to using, just to take the pressure off of always having to have TESSE up and running.
Just to be fair, I want to make sure, Councilman Rodriguez, I'm not sure if you were finished with your questions.
No, I did. And you answered my questions. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem. I'm not sure. I know that that was one of your questions. I'm not sure if that was...
Yes. No, that wasn't one of my questions.
Okay. Please, continue.
The next question I have for both of you is, we have quite a few money, quite a few bit of money in reserve. So is it possible to use some of that reserve to boost our technology? Who makes that decision, Mr. Thule? Mayor Madilla?
Through the chair council member, a significant portion of the funds that are in reserve right now will be for the construction of the new facility.
Okay.
To the extent that funds are available then, and they fall within the parameters of the grant, we could certainly explore the technology that the council has discussed. Yvette, you're a little closer to the budget than I am. What is the degree of flexibility you have right now?
Yeah. These grants come with strings attached. They already have specific allocations for what we applied for. However, we did apply for $60,000 for marketing. And then our newer grants, where are they? The CALOES, these grants over here, we are considering technology. We've written those grants really general to then later determine if they're needed for the transit facility or if we could potentially use it for technology upgrades.
So through the chair council member, I wrote a big note here, "technology." I think I understand the council's direction.
Yep.
And just to be fair, through the meetings we've had at Transportation Commission, additional buses, larger buses, additional routes, which means more drivers and costs and things like that. So, and now technology. So we will add that, certainly add that to the list of need, figure out what the priority is, and then of course, figure out what that's going to cost. But certainly heard loud and clear this evening.
Thank you.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes, I'm wondering, do you have a defibrillator on the buses in case someone have a heart attack since you deal with the public? Maybe we can look into, you know, adding one, you know.
Do our drivers have a CPR training?
Some of them do.
First aid, yeah.
Some of them don't. I mean, it's not something that we're mandated on at this point.
So we'll get them trained by PD. We'll get concealed carry weapons permit and now medical training for our drivers. We just keep adding to the list. Councilman Holly.
Yeah. I just have one question. And I notice probably something to look at in the future. We was talking about the safety part of it of somebody getting hurt. If you have a driver or a person on the bus that's real adequate, how do you contact PD? Do you just have to use your cellphone or is that available?
I'm not sure I understand. How do...
If somebody's on your bus?
What does the driver do?
Yes.
If they're having an issue?
Right.
The first thing is they call on the radio and we kind of ascertain what the issue is and either call 911 or I'll call the regular police line and get to the dispatcher and get help on the way.
Have you ever looked into having security people on your team just to go around, make sure that, you know?
That's me.
You're it.
Okay.
You're it. Mayor Protem Gallegos.
One more question, one last question. My commissioner for the Transit Advisory is a trainer for Madera Unified who also does in-service training for their drivers. Maybe we can team up with them when they have in-service training on certain issues that we might think our drivers need, that they could go to those in-service trainings. Because as it's a whole driver training, and I see that we're transporting a lot of children now. And so I think that's something that we need to look at, especially in the summertime, that that would might maybe be an open door to get in and do a partnership thing with them.
I'll bring it up during our next tab meeting to explore.
And if you need help with that, let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yvette, thank you so much for that presentation. And Doug, thank you for being here. I'll just finish with a couple of things. I think the theme here this evening that we're trying to give you input to have the best service possible. And Doug, to your point, you said this is a small town. Yeah, we are a small town, but there still should be big expectations. And customer service really doesn't cost anything. And so I think that was relayed to you when we had the unmet transit needs. And we spoke to the Campesinas. They came to the meeting, some women from the Shunamite House as well as others. And I think the most important thing here is to hear those people who use our service. And I understand that sometimes it's a one-sided story. But providing the best service possible is who we are, regardless of what department. And so I think you understand that completely. And so whatever training we can give our employees and whatever best service that we can provide for our riders is our ultimate goal. And so whether it be technology or additional buses, I think that that's an avenue that we're going to continue to pursue. And I really look forward to our new building, which will be down the road. That, again...
Can't wait.
Yeah. And so what that would look like, a big, beautiful building with beautiful buses and beautiful service, I think is really our ultimate goal. I do want to touch on a couple of things. Disabled seniors and students seem to be our, the majority of our ridership. And so we had discussed at Transportation, additional stops at places like the Camarena Center, additional routes to the hospitals or other pharmacies and things of that nature, which would fit our ridership. And I know that we've pursued some routes to the State Center. And I think the numbers on students, as you said, this is not during school, but I still don't think that we have tapped into the market to let them know that there is a ride available. And I will share that there's a number of students that do not go to higher education simply because they don't have a ride. And so I really think that we need to market that to our students and let them know that just a few miles down the road, they'll be able to get either an inexpensive ride or some sort of free ride or something to further their education. So again, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for all your input. And as I've always said before, during these workshops, the more information we have, the more we can advocate and let our community know. So thank you again very much for that workshop.
Thank you for your attention.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to the consent calendar, I would like to pull item B10 for further discussion. Is there another council member that would like to pull or further discuss any other consent calendar item? Seeing none, I will accept a motion for the consent calendar excluding item B10.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar excluding item B10.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar excluding item B10. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item B10, I know this is an informational report, Sonia, regarding an overage of approximately $900 to Councilman Robinson's budget. Can you briefly elaborate a little bit on protocol or how that works on overages on a council member's budget?
Typically, as the expenses come through, it is the responsibility of my office to monitor those. We make sure that we have appropriate receipts, that they are eligible expenses. At some point, when I see a councilperson is approaching their total allocation, then I will notify them of that.
And so did we have like a software change or was there, we were switching over to the TATA units at the same time and so?
There was a little bit of a change under the MACE system, the old system. We had individual budget line items for each council member. When the new system was implemented and we went live, it was one lump sum. At that point, I requested that our finance department please break it down into individual project budgets so that I could better track those.
Okay. Where I'm going with this basically is, obviously, we had our budget meeting on Monday, which was four hours long, and we made some recommendations to Mr. Thule, 3% MNO reductions, basically tighten the belt. And I don't think the council should be exempt from that. I think we need to tighten the belt all the way around. So leading by example, at another meeting date, what I'd like to do is bring this back, not this particular item, but bring back our protocol and our budget for the council and make sure we stay within our means, make sure there's a better way of tracking what we use as far as travel and expenses and things of that nature. So if my colleagues have any questions or concerns, please chime in. But I think that the council should not be exempt. Or in this particular case, I understand that there may have been a software issue. I just don't think it's fair to ask for additional funds when we're asking for everybody else to cut or tighten the belt, if you will. So is that something that we can bring back to council at another meeting?
Absolutely.
Councilman Rigby.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, that's funny you bring that up. I actually had just shot an email to Ms. Alvarez asking for kind of where I was, maybe catching wind of some of the things going on across the street. It just made me a little more self-aware of what I was doing with the allotted amount of money that I've been given to utilize to my discretion. So I appreciate you wanting to bring this back. And I agree. I think that if we're going to be asking our departments to sort of begin to look at areas that they can begin to save money and better utilize resources, I should be no different. So I support that sentiment, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for those comments. Councilman Robinson.
Yes, you brought it up, you know, since I'm on the executive board for the League of City, you know, they have guidelines that you know, go by, which specifically say that you have to attend all the meetings. Okay? And before, they gave me, what do you say, more funds for transportation because most of the transportation is down to Larry, Sacramento, Long Beach. And when I go to, when I attend the meetings in Sacramento, I don't spend the night. I drive up there early in the morning, attend the policy meeting, then I return home. You know, in fact, you know, I have to attend like the golf tournament in Dunbar, which was on the 2nd. Then I attend the League of Sacramento Community and Economic Development in Sacramento on the 8th. In fact, on the 15th, it was General Amendmentship in Visalia. You know, I have 280,000 miles on my vehicle. So that's a lot of gas. You know, they provide meals. But, you know, if I have to turn in the, you know, we say the gas that I spent, you know, even when I have to go down to Ontario, I don't ask for a hotel room. I go there and I stay with my relatives. Then I tend, have to fight traffic, and then I come back.
I understand.
So, you know, if you don't want me to be present on the executive board and the policy board, if we can't afford it, then I'll just, you know, bow out.
This is not personal, Mr. Councilman.
I know it's not personal, but if we can't afford it, you know, I'm for it also, you know.
That is my point. That is exactly my point. I appreciate your understanding that.
Yes, I understand.
That if we're going to tighten the belt and ask for staff and basically across the board to try to fill a million-dollar gap.
Yes, I understand.
I don't think that we are exempt at all. So that, I appreciate you understanding my point.
I do.
Yeah, I understand that you have a lot of responsibilities, as do we all.
Yeah, right.
We all have responsibilities and meetings and travel and things of that nature. So thank you for understanding that. Councilman Rodriguez.
Yeah, you know, I was just going to ask a question, but I think Councilman Robinson answered that. As far as, you know, the executive committee here for the League of Cities, I know that we have a representative and that would be you. So I don't know how many of these meetings there are throughout the year, but I know I get constant emails. And obviously, we have someone, and fortunately enough, someone to go attend those and come back and bring us all the good new policies that are out there that can definitely affect our city. So, I mean, I am in support. I just didn't know to what extent. This is not a, I'm assuming it's not like the family sharing, right? So where you can take from me, take from someone else. I think it's individually, right? It's allotted for every individual?
There are individual budgets. In situations where we have considered requesting an allowance of going over your individual budget, we still look at the overall budget.
I see.
And we've been able to capture it in the overall budget.
So if I, I want to get this correct here, is we're allotted a lump sum, right?
Correct.
And every individual then is broken down a certain amount? Or is this, are we talking about a sum that we've already exceeded for the whole council? Or is this for individual?
For the current fiscal year, what we're talking about for the current report is an individual budget has been exceeded, not the overall.
Okay. So, and typically historically, I mean, are we typically under?
Typically, we are under, yes.
I'm not asking for an exemption or anything like that, but I do want to make sure that we don't lose that value between, you know, the League of Cities and especially our council. But, you know, as our mayor said, obviously, we're in the position now where we're asking every other department to tighten down. And, you know, I wasn't sure if any other funds from that allotment would be able to be transferred over.
That's entirely, if the council wanted to make a change to that, then it's entirely up to the council. But I think, I think in the end, the overall budget is looked at. And I don't know if Mr. Thule or Mr. Prisbila would like to add to that.
And I just want to make sure that we're clear here. It's not really for discussion for this evening. This is something that I'm asking to bring back, that we will have proper information. A lot of those questions will be answered, and then we can have that discussion at that time. So I don't want to go off necessarily sideways on this.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, that's fine. These are all valid questions. I just want to make sure that...
It was pulled for a later time?
That's what I'm requesting.
Okay.
That is what I'm requesting. Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Okay, it was pulled for a later time, then we'll use my question for discussion for later.
If you wish.
Well, because I'm new to the council, just like Councilman Rodriguez, is that I'm going to, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm trying to get this in my head. Like for Madera Unified, we have MUNA representatives that choose to come be part of the union, but the MUNA representative can choose to become exec board. So it's a choice. So Derek represents us for the League of City because we've chosen him to be our rep. But for him to go to exec board, am I getting this right, that it's a choice to do exec board and to go further on, to do extra means for that?
That's correct. And I believe there is a stipend from the League of Cities
Okay.
to be on the exec board. And just for the record... And just for the record, we approved for Councilman Robinson to have double what our stipend is. And then this evening, it went above and beyond that, another $900. So, you are correct, Mayor Protem, in that it's a choice. And not necessarily an appointment that this board would make, knowing that there would be additional travel and things of that nature.
Okay. So, the tax dollars that we're using to send him to League of Cities is for our representative, to be a representative of the city council, correct?
Correct.
And so, to do exec board, that comes from the League of Cities?
As, I'm not sure if it's an appointment or if it's an election or...
I think it's an election, Derek? You got to be exec board?
I got appointed.
Appointed, okay.
By the executive board.
Mr. Mayor, may I help?
Of course, please.
The city is a member of the League of California Cities. We pay dues for that purpose. There are numerous opportunities for leadership within the league. Councilmember Robinson has chosen to step up to the plate and assume one of those leadership positions. That comes with a cost. Council recognizes that and provides additional funds for that purpose. I think that's the discussion you're having this evening.
Got it.
Councilman Hawley?
You answer my question, thank you.
Thank you, Sonia, for that. And we will wait for that to be on the upcoming agenda.
Understood, thank you.
With that, I would like a motion for item B-10.
Move to approve.
It's an non-action. It was informational only, there was no action, so...
As far as consent, so we didn't need it on the consent originally? We excluded it in our original motion to approve consent, so as long as there's direction, we're good?
It's fine, it was informational only, so...
Okay, perfect, thank you very much for that. Moving on to item C-1, a second reading and consideration of adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Madera, California, amending the Madera Municipal Code to add Chapter 16 to Title IV pertaining to rental housing inspections. Mr. Montez?
Oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Since I've probably used more than my fair share of council's time, I'm going to try to be brief. And I'm just going to jump right in. The City of Madera has a significant interest in ensuring that the rental housing remains safe, sanitary, and desirable housing option for its citizens. Due to issues concerning the deterioration condition of the City of Madera housing stock identified in current and previous general plan, housing elements, and neighborhood preservation staff observation, a proactive rental housing inspection program was developed with the help of various interested parties and stakeholders. Staff presented the proposed ordinance to the City Council at its June 7, 2017, meeting. After conducting a public hearing and considering testimony provided, council voted unanimously to introduce the ordinance. Completion of the second reading is the final step required in order to adopt the ordinance. The staff report provided to council contains the outline of the major components of the proposed rental inspection ordinance. I will be happy to answer any questions the council may have. Otherwise, staff recommends the City Council adopt the proposed ordinance amendments.
Great, Steve. That was short compared to the last five months that you came here. Yeah, no pictures for us or anything like that? No. Councilman Rigby?
Steve, I wasn't here for the spirited conversation that was had at the last meeting. And for that, I am forever going to be, going to be reminiscent of it. I did watch online. But I do, I do want to say thank you so much. I know I wasn't here to do that, so I want to take this opportunity for you and your team for taking a lead on this. I can't help but feel like I have a small play in this. I remember walking through that home with Viola, and I'm not sure who the other code enforcement officer was at the time, but just appalled and shocked that this was a living condition of a family, not just a single person, not just even a few fellas living the bachelor life, but this was a family with children and elderly woman. And so, thank you so much, and I appreciate all the efforts that you put in to not only draft this ordinance, but to reach out, to get as much input, and I think to hold the position of, I don't have all the answers. I'm willing to connect with those that have input. And so, for that, I'm grateful, and I appreciate all the hard work.
Well, I'd like to add that it wasn't, like you're saying, it wasn't all my hard work. We had, I had a lot of help from, you know, director, management, council, staff, everybody, you know, involved in the process. It wasn't me, I wouldn't have been able to do this alone. So, I had a lot of help, a lot of encouragement, and a lot of traction. So, and thank you, thank you for the opportunity to do something like this.
Absolutely, team effort. But I think Councilman Rigby is cutting himself short. I think it was his ride along, if you had a code enforcement that got the whole ball rolling on this thing, so...
Glad you said that, when there's nobody in this room.
It's on video. It's on video, YouTube.
That's beautiful, I'll get several phone calls.
Any other questions of Steve, or anyone else for that matter? Seeing none, I'll ask for title.
Thank you, Mayor. Adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Madera, California, amending the Madera Municipal Code to add Chapter 16 to Title IV pertaining to rental housing inspections.
Mr. Mayor, I move to way further reading and adopt.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that.
Oh, Steve.
I will move on to council reports, starting with Councilman Robinson.
Nothing to report.
Mayor Protem Gallegos?
I attended the Madera County Compact banquet for our ag community, and they put together an ag camp for 42 students, junior high students, who went and saw different agriculture companies in Madera. And what was amazing is they asked them all at the beginning, who thinks that they would see a future in ag? And there was like three hands that went up. Well, at the banquet, after seeing that ag is not just farming, they asked the students at this banquet, how many do you think would be interested in being in ag? And I could count fast enough, but I think almost every student raised their hand, which almost put tears in Mrs. Cecil's eyes to see that kids were excited. And it's hard to get junior high kids excited about anything. It's a very difficult age, so that was really neat to attend. The next thing is, I would like to thank our police department for our lovely coins. Thank you so much, they're beautiful. And to announce that Mr. Talbert has a grandson. We don't know the weight or the size, but his name is Dominic. He arrived today, so congratulations to him.
That's awesome, that's awesome. Thank you so much for that. Councilman Rigby?
Yeah, I have a question for Mary Ann, just really quick. Can you fill me in on how the cooling centers are working and where they are? Again, I had a couple of phone calls, and I think I sent them to the right spot, but just fill me in on how those have been going, because I don't see, I don't see the triple digits going away anytime soon.
I don't feel the triple digits going away.
I don't either.
Thank you for the question, council member. We have two cooling centers, both funded by PG&E, and they fund staff and any equipment. So, we actually purchase water and pass that out. We're at Pan Am from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
That's what I thought, good.
And then we're also at Burgon from 8:00 until 2:00. But noticing the extreme heat, we expanded those hours at Burgon this week from 8:00 until 8:00. And we did have 12 or 14 people there this week in the afternoon, up until probably about 7:30.
Awesome, I appreciate that, thank you for that information. While I'm on parks, I've had the pleasure of, I am a member now of the tadpole swimming, whatever you call it, I don't know. It's not swimming for me. I hold a child that is monkey gripped to my body, screaming at the top of his lungs.
Is that what that was?
That's what, that was us, that is me, so I am out there. But I appreciate your, your lifeguards are doing a phenomenal job. I mean, they're hands-on, they're great, they're friendly, I appreciate that. And then, my son is really excited about the lunch that he gets to eat. So, that's, I think that's a great program that you guys offer, free lunch throughout the City of Madera to kids that need it. And so, kudos to you, Mary Ann, and the job you're doing. It's fun to be out there, though, to see so many different caveats of parks and recreation and how we're serving the community for kids that are out of school. I know we got to hear a great presentation of different organizations that are reaching our next generation. So, it's, it's fun to be in the pool with my son, but it's a lot more fun to even see others enjoying the same, the same park, so...
I'll pass that along to staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Hawley?
Nothing to report.
Councilman Rodriguez?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, but I am curious to know what Mr. Merchant was drawing in that pad there. Seems like...
If I had a psychologist, and I don't yet, I'm not even sure he or she could tell. But if you could help me out with that, I'd be willing to get a free diagnosis.
During the transportation, I thought you were drawing some futuristic transportation vehicle there, but...
Maybe.
That's good. That's the new sphere of influence line, I think is what that is. Councilman Oliver?
I'd just like to say, Mary Ann Olga Salsete Garcia and Adam Romero were both gave a really great presentation this morning at 6:30 at Sunrise Rotary. So, I really appreciated their participation. They gave a good report on our upcoming summer activities, one of which is men's basketball. So, Team Madera Glass is going to be coming back this year, two seasons in a row. We're the defending champs, so I'm looking forward to that league as well as all their program that's going to become available for our city's residents, so thank you.
No rules against stacked teams, Mary Ann? No, maybe a blind draw next time or something?
Me, Rob Poitras?
Yeah, say no more. I mean, after that, it doesn't really matter, you guys are stacked. Thank you, staff, again this evening for all of your input, and again to my colleagues for those phenomenal questions. When we have workshops and people come into city council, the more engaged we are, the better, for both of our sakes. So, thank you very much for that. I have nothing else to report, so I will ask at this time, Mr. Richardson, to make an announcement, please.
Yes, Mayor, the council will now adjourn to closed session. One item, that's conference with legal counsel and anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, subdivision D-2, in one matter.
Thank you very much for that. And as always, I expect to see staff here when we get out.
As always.
And everybody laughs. Have a good evening.
Okay, Mayor. The Council adjourned the closed session and one item anticipated litigation that was significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9 subdivision D two. In one matter, no reportable action was taken.
Thank you very much. With that, meeting adjourned.